Good afternoon, everybody. This is the Town of Dewey Beach Monthly Town Council Meeting being held at the Life Saving Station, as well as via Zoom. Today is Friday, August 18th, 2023, and it's 3:00. With that, I'd like to convene the Town Commissioner meeting with opening ceremonies. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, flag, United States of America, the republic of which stands on the nation under our individual liberty, being justice for us.
Thank you. Second roll call. Commissioner Bauer, present.
Commissioner Givings.
Here.
Commissioner Juzinski.
Here.
And Commissioner Persinger.
Virtually there.
Virtually there. And Mayor Bill Stevens is here. We also have members of our community, as well as council chief and town manager. I believe that I was going to ask for a motion to adopt the agenda, but I did have one amendment, and that was put 4-1 and 1-2 to move up the audit, since we have Dan Kenny on the line. That's okay.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. With that, open to the floor, as well as Zoom, first floor for public comment. If anyone's here for public comment for anything that's not part of the agenda, I'd ask that you can come on up. If it is part of the agenda, we can then on agenda items, and we will do it at that point in time for students. Please state your name and address, and have a floor.
How you doing? My name is Harry Gallagher. I'm at 121 Plage Street. After reading the notice on the website regarding the previous agreement with GFL and Waste Management that remain intact with the new company, the new company, it reminded me of the email I sent in May 8th, 2023, to the town. The original posting agreement was dated February 2017. You have copies of that if you'd like that. It looked like it expired in five years from that, which would have expired in 2022. I emailed you all copies of this on August 16th, by the way. During that email, I kind of went out and looked at other communities, and I found out that other communities were paying like $55 a quarter, $75 a quarter. If this agreement is still in effect, why have the residents been charged more than the original agreement? Like, for example, in July of 2020, we were charged 2887. The posted rate should have been 2732. I have more information here if you would like that. The last year, for example, we were supposed to get dual service in May, and we didn't get that until until after Memorial Day. So it's my suggestion that the commissioners reform Attraction Recycle Committee and consider moving forward with the new agreement. Many owners are still confused as to what is required and what isn't as far as the rollback service versus the the other services that they provide as far as rollback. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Just had a curious, Kate, is that contract, is that contract online? Can you get to the GFL con?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll help you if you want.
Thank you, Harry. Anyone else here for public comment?
One, two.
Sure, bring him in. Ms. Moskowitz, you have three minutes.
Yeah, hi, I'm David Moskowitz, the full-time resident. There is an issue with the town election this year. Per Section 10-4 of the town code, every candidate for an elected office, an applicant for employment with the town, shall be required to truthfully complete, execute, and file with the town manager's office a financial disclosure report at the time of filing for candidacy or employment. I let the town know that this has always been done and wasn't done this year. I was informed by the town that no such document exists and never responded to what changed this year as how they aren't required for the current three candidates. However, someone town affiliated did attempt to retaliate against me for asking a question of why the town is not following the law this year. And then on the interest of conflicts, former officer and current property owner Nick Crowell spoke in December in public comments about what happened to him, and if it can happen to him, it could happen to anyone. The town now allows a conflict of interest where the police can work for the establishment they are supposed to be policing. How can anyone believe someone can be neutral when they are getting paid by one of the parties? This used to be prohibited by the town, and I don't understand what changed three, four years ago to allow it and how it's even legal. I am aware of towns near us would prohibit this practice. It's important that any conflicts are removed and all town employees and officials disclose any conflict in the town, such as significant others, adult children, or and business ventures. That said, the police need to be paid correctly by the town. The town just had an officer's payroll check bounce. Police officers and employees in general rely on receiving their paychecks on time and not for the bank to take it back from the employee after they deposited. And it's this year, but it needs to be looked at ASAP. Town employees rely on their paycheck. Thank you.
Thank you. Kate, anyone else?
We also have Phil Mewker and Rachel Swickie. Not sure if they want to make a comment now or not, but they're.
We'll ask them, and they have the ability to raise their hands. Is that correct, if they want to speak? So if they want, if any agenda item, they want to come on in, just have them raise their hands. With that, we'll move on to updates and announcements. Town manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Everything the chief and I have done since we've been here is all about public safety. When I got here two and a half years ago, one of my first priorities was to lower the speed going through town from 30 to 25. I had requests to mark the crosswalks, especially at the north end. It's been done. We've marked the crosswalks on the roads here on Route 1. We've hired three new police officers. We've got a speed limit flashing sign as you come in now into town. We've worked with the businesses around town to encourage them to upgrade some of their systems on how they're monitoring people that are coming in and out with weapons and other things, and they've complied with most of that. We've increased the signage on Route 1 to show that we do have cameras up and down Route 1 for the 11 signs that are there. This is all about public safety. Also, I asked Del Dot about the flashing yellow lights that are out at the crosswalks. I've had some folks ask me about changing them to red. That's actually the rectangular rapid flashing beacons that are out there. This is a quote from Del Dot. They said they're the national standard, and they cannot be converted to red with those type of signs. So if we wanted that done, we'd have to change the signage out there to make them red. Moving on, none of our police officers work any pay jobs with the exception of the races in the morning, those 5Ks. There are none of them working at any of the establishments at night, just to make that clear. Also, I'd like to mention that CJ Fritschman won a national championship in the beach flags this year at the national competition down in Virginia Beach. I've also talked to Carol Everhart. She said the chamber overall for our hotels for Rehoboth in Dewey for the months of July and August, so far this year, this month and August, we're down about 7% compared to last year. Also, we're going to be doing an RFP for repairing some of the beach mats. Some of the beach mats that go over the dunes are going to need to be repaired. I'll be doing an RFP this fall on that. Sunset Park update, so that's at the end of Daguerre Street. We're still working with the Center of the Inland Bays. Right now, they're doing surveys out there, and they're also putting together a rough drawing that will be given to the commissioners sometime in October to show you exactly what they're going to be doing out there for the living shoreline along Daguerre Street. Allison Andrew from Fall Caston has been working with us for several months now, but I really had a chance to meet with her and work with her a little bit more, and with Sheena during our last audit. You're going to see more of her helping Sheena out and helping me out with the finances as we go on through the rest of the year, especially since we're running, trying to run the budget with the GFOA government financing. I think she'll be a huge help for it. She is on the line. She's a certified CPA, graduate from the University of Delaware. Jim, now, if it's okay, would like to provide an update on the 5G polls.
Yes, Jim Dedeas. Mr. Dedeas? You're probably on mute.
If not, I can do it. So I can do the update. So there's three polls that are currently in question. The new polls are in. They're on Clayton Street, Rodney Street, and on Cullen Street. The new polls are in. We're just waiting for DPL to turn the switch to those new polls, and then the old polls will be removed. They've told us they're going to be removed next week, but I think they'll be out before the end of the month, maybe the first month in September, but three of the five will be moved off the dunes. The other two, one is on Cullen Street. We're still waiting for DPNL to find a good location for that poll. And then the last one is down on St. Louis Street, and DPNL says the poll cannot be moved there because they don't have another location where they're going to be a wrong power to it. So that's the update on the 5G. Pending any questions, Mayor, that's all I have for my comments.
Any questions, council?
Questions? When does the money that the state gave us run out?
So next September.
Next September. So it has to get all five of them moved, correct?
We can always go back and ask for an extension if necessary.
Yeah, but my concern is, you know, if three of them are going to move, when are the other two going to move? Because it's taken this long to get three of them moved.
Right, we've asked both DPNL and Verizon and their subcontractor to be here today by Zoom, and they all declined.
Anyone else?
Jim, did I miss anything? I'm sorry, Mayor.
No, sir, you covered it all.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay. Committee reports. Commissioner Bauer.
The marketing committee has come up with a very creative event coming up, September 22nd. And I want to recognize Kate for being included in that marketing discussion there. It's Jaws on the Bay, and people will be able to get in their inner tubes and sit in the bay and watch the fine movie Jaws.
Will they be signing waivers before this happens?
You know, I heard there might be one of those mechanical sharks going through the water. Is that in the budget, that mechanical shark?
What about anything for budget finance?
Nothing from budget and finance, but I know there's some things that we want to refer over there. You can get going.
All right. Commissioner Givings.
Thank you, Kate.
The investment committee met immediately after our last special meeting. The portfolio remained strong and it's meeting or beating the indices. We're getting 5.2% money market interest right now, which might give us an opportunity for more fixed income investments. We're going to expect a volatile fourth quarter as everything has been volatile so far, meeting quarterly.
Sounds like you know who you're talking about.
I take good notes.
I know you do. Commissioner Juzinski.
Infrastructure, so infrastructure met this past one. Subject came up, Reed and the proposal for Reed Street. It was a good meeting. We didn't vote, or they didn't vote, rather, on anything specific, but I think there's a recognition that we've been kind of chasing our tail for a long time, you know, with try this, try this, which solution's going to work? And there was not a vote, but there was kind of a consensus that we really got to stop. Got to make sure we invest the money and get that street fixed, but we got to figure out what's the right way to get it fixed, that we're not just taking action and take action, but rather taking action to say, okay, we feel this is pretty solid and this is going to work. Some disagreements about what things have worked and how well they work based on individual perceptions and whatnot. There'll probably be some informal discussions in meetings tabled, and we'll reconvene to discuss more when there's kind of more information, more data gathered about what options are.
Great, and I assume, therefore, we haven't gotten any update in terms of the viability of the from.
Remington inverted or standard pipe? So they have not given us an update since the last one of $63,000 to fix, to put the flaps in that would go up mechanically with the tide. I've talked to another company. They are working on an estimate on what they think it would cost to do something like that there. But neither one of those are final. You know, that's going to go back to the infrastructure committee. There'll be more discussion on it because at this point, as the commissioner said, we want to make sure we get the right solution for that problem.
Great, thanks, guys. Commissioner Persinger.
Yeah, the Climate Change Committee is scheduled to meet on September the 8th. The audit, the audit committee met earlier this week and will hear very shortly about the results of that meeting and their review of the 2023 audit. We're trying to re-energize the Charter and Code Review Committee. The chairman, Dan Malli, does not wish to continue as chair of that committee. And Dave Lyons, as we'll, you know, discuss shortly, is agreeing to become chair of that committee. I think going forward, in order to re-energize this committee, I need to perhaps tweak the the description of the responsibilities for this group and make them focus not so much on the letter of the language in the code or the charter, but really, what do they think it should say? What are the recommendations? What problems do they see, first of all, and how do they think it ought to work? And then we can worry about word smithing and making sure we get the language correct. So I want to make sure that that's clear in the description so that we don't get too tied up in the specifics of the language. The other thing I think we need to do is to get some additional members for that group, and I'm hoping that the town will be supportive in sending out an email with the new description of what this committee should do and seek some new members. You know, I think that's a good way to get the word out, and hopefully we'll get some some people interested and really get this committee going again, because I think there is some work to do.
Commissioner, as soon as you get that to Kate, we'll get that out in an email. And obviously, if we can have that before the organizational meeting in September, that'd be great. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes, and first is a motion for the approval of the July 21st, 2023 meeting minutes.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I know, I was looking up for you, Gary.
Just brief discussion here. The the section where it talks about the police chief's authority to close the beach didn't seem to ring true with me, and I didn't go back and listen to the recording, but I didn't think we had formally tabled it. I think we had sort of, the consensus around the table was that the chief already has that authority. And then at some point, if we might come up and come back and add something to the code, but I didn't think we had formally tabled.
I believe we, if my memory serves me, we agreed that the chief does already have that power, but we were going to explicitly put that within a revision when we submit the charter in January. Is that?
That's my recollection.
Okay. But we need to tweak that language a little bit to make it read just as you described.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right, we'll make that change and so then. So now, can I get a, I have a motion, a second, with the amendment, as Gary has alluded to. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I get a motion for the approval of minutes for August 4th, 2023, special meeting minutes?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Any comments? I'll give it to Gary since he's out of here. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, both minutes have been approved. We have, we have, with the agenda, we had modified it to number four is number one, discuss as possible to accept draft order as recommended by the audit committee. I believe the audit chair is here, Ms. Johnson, if you'd like to come up and give us an overview. And we also have our auditor online, Dan Kenny. Kenny?
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, as you know, I'm Julie Johnson, Chair of the Audit Committee. The Audit Committee met on Tuesday to discuss the audit that was just completed and the draft that was handed to us by Mitchell Titus. I'll let Dan Kenny give a brief overview of kind of what the findings were. Mr. Kenny?
All right, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Dan Kenny, partner with Mitchell and Titus, along the line with me as well as Christine Pastor from Mitchell and Titus. She's an associate and worked on the audit. We have three documents that we would like to show you. It's the financial statements, the management letter, and then the presentation that we went over the other evening. So moderator, Kate, may Christina have control over the slides?
Yes.
Okay. All right, great. So the first document that'll come on the screen will be the financial statements and the independent auditors' report. And it indicates that we've audited the town of Dewey Beach as of and for the year ended March 31, 2023. In our opinion, the financial statements are fairly presented. It discusses how the audit is conducted, and there's two standards, generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards. And then if you go to page two, this is where it talks about our auditors' responsibility, everything that we have to do with respect to the audit. Page three talks about the RSI and the supplemental information that you have. And then page four talks about because your audit is done in accordance with government auditing standards, there's a report on internal control. Okay, moving on, within the financial statements, your MDNA goes from pages five to 11. And the other evening on page 10, there was just one sentence that we removed, so that has been reflected in this, this version. The last sentence on page 10 was removed. If you go to pages 12 through 17, these are your basic financial statements. And if you stay on page 12 for a second, on page 12, this is your governmental activities. The measurement focus that's used on this particular statement is identified on page 20, and it's the economic measurement focus, and this is known as the basis of accounting that you used here. It's full accrual accounting. Page 13 is the statement of activities. And then on page 14, this is where you have your governmental funds. The measurement focus utilized here is the current financial resources concept, and the basis of accounting here is modified accrual. And because you have those two different bases of accountings and measurement focuses on page 15 and on page 17, these are the reconciling items that reconcile those statements. Okay, moving on to page 18, this is the notes to your financial. I'm not going to go through the notes because I do want to get through the other documents. So it goes all the way, your notes go all the way through till, till it starts at the RSI information that I mentioned in the independent auditors' report. And then, of course, the supplementary information as well. Okay, so now, why don't we go ahead and pull up the management letter? So the management letter indicates, we have a few comments here. One regarding the policies and procedures. We noted during the audit that in next year's fiscal year '24, you are making certain changes in the area of cash receipts, and you're also in the process of researching a consolidated ERP system. And our recommendation there is that whenever you, you know, adopt a new system, that you get buy-in from the end users and the current personnel to make sure it's an efficient and effective transition. Second comment relates to IT. I believe in the previous fiscal year, you had a security risk assessment performed. They identified certain areas. Those areas have been worked on, and as a result of that, you're developing an IT management handbook. So once again, we want you to consider the entire environment that you have, including the financial process area. Budget controls is the next comment. Included in your financial statements on page 38 is a comparison of your original budget, amended budget to your actual. So this comment recommends that in your financial statements, you'll note that on the expenditure side, there were certain amounts that exceeded the amended budget. However, overall, your overall change in fund balance was a favorable variance, but our recommendation is that during the year, when you have various fluctuations in your revenue sources and you decide to either spend more or less, that you accordingly make changes to your budget. And there's two ways you can do it. There's hard controls. You can make an amendment to the budget, you know, formally, and then also there's something notified as as soft controls, and that's where you can, you know, when you look at your ERP system, you can go ahead and try to identify and let management know that things are getting close to that expenditure line, and then manager, management can consider that and possibly make a change. Next item is fund balance. You have a fund balance policy, which in the last meeting, I applauded Commissioner Persinger for doing that, Mayor Stevens, and of course, management for adopting the fund balance policy, passing it, and actually implementing it. But my recommendation here is there's two areas that you could probably add to it relating to expenditures that can be funded on both restricted and unrestricted, how that would work. And then also whether or not you can utilize expenditures in different categories that may be assigned. Okay, moving on, the last comment. As I talked about in the, when I went through the financial statements, and I told you that you had, you know, your statement of activities is on the economic measurement focus concept and using full accrual accounting, and then, of course, your governmental statements are on the current measurement focus using modified accrual accounting. You know, it's appropriate to have those different accounting differences, but what you need is you need to have three trial balances for that. You provide a beach replenishment fund trial balance, and then you provide a kind of a hybrid of beach replenishment and general fund together in government-wide, but you really need to have all three. So that is the recommendation there. Okay, moving on to the last part of the presentation that we went over. Okay, this just talks about an overview of the results for the audit. There were two past adjustments, one related to depreciation of approximately 16K and another one related to interest of 13K. And then the next few pages talks about what we do with respect to our procedures. Yeah, sorry, Katrina, I'm on page six. Yeah, yeah, this just goes through the different line items and what we do. I'm not going to go through that here with you. So let's go to those charged with governance on page 10. This is where it talks about the plan, scope, and timing. We've complied with all F requirements. Your significant accounting policies, there were no significant changes to that. You go to your next page. Under your estimates, of course, you have a significant estimate with respect to your net pension asset as it relates to the discount rate utilized. And if you go to your next page, this is where it talks about the uncorrected and corrected misstatements. Once again, here mentions the past adjustments, and then the first bullet talks about, these are the entries that we had to make for the conversion entries. The next page, page 13, there were no disagreements with management. We received representation from management, and there were no consultants with other accountants other than the town utilized Allison, Halk, and Fall Caston for their monthly work. I wanted to mention that. And there were no other audit findings or issues to discuss. Okay, so that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions. And at this point, too, I'd want to thank, of course, management, Bill Zolberg, Sheena Hall, Mayor Stevens for comments on the statement, and Commissioner Persinger for comments on the draft statement as well.
I'll open up to council after just a question as well as a few comments. If you look at page 12, I just want the town to know is you look at the, what we typically look at the balance sheet, there's $4 million in current liabilities. Three and a half of that is unearned revenue, and that represents the $3 million that will ultimately go into Town Hall, as well as the $300,000 that Commissioner Bauer alluded to that was given to us to support 5G polls. So they're not, while they're on there as current liabilities, they will be converted into equity. It's not real, it's not debt of the town. The recommendation that you have, Dan, is that we do apply an amendment, is that correct? Amending the budget when we see, when we know that there's going to be a substantial change. Can you quantify a substantial change as to when you would see that happening?
Yeah. Yeah, it's not necessarily a substantial change. It's when you anticipate that you're going to go over in that line item as it relates to that particular expenditure, that's when you should consider amending the budget. So when you look at these controls in place, you know, when you get your new ERP system, and you could alert different, you know, there's different triggers to alert that you're getting close to that particular number with respect to the budget. And so you could probably anticipate, hey, or you should be able to anticipate, hey, we're going to have, we're going to exceed this expenditure line item. We have a good feel for how much more we're going to spend. We should go ahead and amend the budget for that.
Okay. And just to clarify, and one of your recommendations was also to move to three trial balances. We're currently on two. Is that correct?
That's correct, yep.
All right. And we'll work with Fall Caston, as well as the town, to get those items moving forward. Counsel, any questions of Mr. Kenny or Ms. Johnson?
No, thank you. Good job.
Commissioner Persinger.
Yeah, just quickly, I want to thank the town for really doing a good job on this. You know, it looks like a very clean audit to me. Clean has a specific meaning in accounting terms, but I'll use clean as an adjective here. specific meaning in accounting terms, but I'll use clean as as an adjective here. So again, congratulations to the town. One of the points that the mayor just mentioned, that is the budget control recommendations. I think is a really important one, I think, you know, we need to keep an eye on that. You know, we need to know how much, where we expected to be at the end of the year with respected expended, key expenditure items. And obviously our key revenue sources and if things are beginning to look out of balance in some way. You know, we need to be ready to make some adjustments, so it's really important to have the information and the reports in the right format. So we can all make judgments about that and you know, some of this may be handled by the town in terms of soft controls, however those get defined. But there may be some situations where we actually have to take action, make some changes in the budget.
Thank you, Commissioner. With that, are there any other comments, there's no other comments, can I have a motion to accept the draft audit as final? Go ahead, Gary.
Do we have to consider the committee's recommendation first of all?
I don't believe so, I think prior years, recommendations were just tasked to the town to implement. As part of the other management. Mr. Johnson, do you have a comment?
I was just gonna say that the committee obviously does recommend with the one change that Mr. Kenny mentioned with taking out that one sentence. The committee recommends it to be approved by the commissioners.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the record.
For the record. I had it first, we have a second. Any other discussion? Not seeing any all in favor? Thank you for all your work, Julie.
Thank you to Mr. Kenny for all of their work as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan.
Next thing on the agenda is discuss a possible vote to request the planning and zoning commission to consider and recommend impossible changes to the code to amend chapter one eighty five dash fifty three special regulations for townhouses and multi-unit structures in chapter one eighty five zoning table two considering minimum lot area per dwelling unit. I believe we have a council here, please go up and give us your overview.
Good afternoon, everyone, my name is Alex Burns. It's a pleasure to be here, thanks for having me. I'm here on behalf of Glenn in Dallas, he's actually in the Rehoboth Commissioners Meeting, so I guess Friday afternoon is the time to run.
So I hear he chose Rehoboth over us.
I don't know, I'll have to ask him.
Okay.
But um as I think I mentioned, I'm an attorney with Bearman Dallas and we represent the owner of two hundred Cullen Street, better known as Pfeiffer Orchards Farms Kitchen. And as noted on the agenda, we're requesting consideration of a zoning amendment to one eighty five dash fifty three D two. Before I really get into this, you know, our proposal essentially is that the code be amended to provide additional flexibility in the use of private property in limited circumstances. I understand that there is very likely some opposition here, I saw a letter in the K B C that this morning. And as noted on the agenda, this is not a presentation. We hope to, for lack of a better phrase, have our day in court at some point. We're looking to really just, I view this as a procedural step recommending sending this to the planning commission for their recommendation. At that point, planning commission will have public hearing on this, there'll be ample opportunity for public input. It'll come back up to this body, there'll be another public hearing required under the code. And there'll be further opportunity, we can provide more information. Any information you require, provide a presentation and additional supporting materials. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but I didn't prepare a full presentation for today.
Any questions, counsel before? Well, first, Commissioner Persinger?
Well, do you want to do a public comment first, if there is any or?
Is anyone here from the public would like to comment? Any virtual public comments? None, not seeing any, go ahead, Commissioner Persinger.
Well, first of all, I wonder, he doesn't have a formal presentation, but it seems to me for the public and for the record, shouldn't he at least describe what it is they want to do?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So for full disclosure, Pfeiffer Orchards applied for a variance through the board of adjustment. My firm was not involved in that, we came in after that. And essentially what we would like to do is to amend one eighty five dash fifty three D two, so this would apply only to the RR and the RB districts. And decrease the lot area per dwelling unit to three thousand so long as the units themselves do not exceed fifteen hundred square feet. So essentially, my client has residential units in Lewis that he rents and in his experience occupants of smaller rentals tend to be quieter and better behaved. So he would like to have small rental units, not large ones. And he's very close to having the square footage needed for three. I think it's, let's see, so he would need ten thousand eight hundred square feet. And right now he has ten thousand forty eight square feet. So the property yields two point eight dwelling units right now. Just shy of three. And so that is the basis of this and you know, the idea that smaller rental units potentially lead to better behaved occupants is the justification here. I'm happy to answer any more questions.
I'll have anybody from counsel have any questions, but I do laugh, I mean, I remember in college and the smaller units didn't, were necessarily less allowed.
Yeah, I, I'm not a renter myself, I don't have any units, so I don't, that's my client's experience.
Yeah, and and for, for the community as well as council, what, what this is, is that the way the code is written, they could add additional dwelling units to the space based upon the total square footage, it's for when it's declared to be a multi-use. And as you said, I think there are two point eight and they're trying to put three in. Any questions before we discuss this? David?
No, I don't, I don't have a question, I just need some discussion.
Go ahead.
So this is a
But Mr. Wilson, can you come on up, I apologize. My only question, I just wanted to wrap my mind around what the what it was we're talking about, we're talking about one building that is a residential and commercial mixed use property?
Right, so this would apply to the RR district and the RB district, so this wouldn't be just one property, but it would be a very limited scope and you know, through the planning commission process, we hope to explore any possible unintended consequences of this. But correct, property I was describing is a mixed use property, it's Pfeiffer's Farm Kitchen on the ground floor and then apartments are proposed above that. Does that answer your question?
May I ask a clarified question, well, is the intention for Pfeiffer's to add a second floor or to build a new building with with apartments on the second floor?
I do not know, I will follow up on that.
Okay. Commissioner Persinger, did you have a question?
I do not have a question, I just have some discussion.
Okay. As stated, this is to request to send it to planning and zoning. I'll ask for a motion in a second, then we can go to the discussion. So.
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Okay, now let's have some discussion. Gary?
Yeah, when I think of reasons why we make zoning changes, I think of three possibilities, the first law is there a problem that needs to be solved. You know, in some cases, we may have a property that is zoned a particular way, that's inconsistent with the surrounding properties. And it makes sense to rezone that particular property. We can't generally can't make a zoning change if it applies to just one general, one, one property alone. But again, it's often to solve a problem. The, the second reason I think of is if there's an objective in our comprehensive plan that we want to pursue, so that we can say that we've achieved that, we want to move in the right direction. That's in a direction that's consistent with the comprehensive plan. The third reason I can think of is simply to make a change in the zoning code that you know, we really feel is going to be beneficial for the town as a whole. I don't think that this proposal meets any of those criteria. I don't think it's a problem to be solved here. This property can be developed under the existing zoning code. The problem for the property owner, not the problem, but the issue for the property owner is that he can't build a number of units he would like to build under the current code. He told the the board of adjustment that in fact he would have preferred to build, build four units. Couldn't manage the parking for four units and so settled on three. That was not a successful request in front of the board of adjustment. So again, I don't, I don't think there's a problem to be solved here, this is really a customized solution that applies to one property owner. And since we can't approve that, you know, it has to apply to other sections of town. So we're talking about the RB and the RR districts, which is basically all of the properties south of Houston Street. What this will do is increase housing density. A, a six thousand square foot property now could have two units on it. Where under the current code, it would take seventy two hundred square feet to have two units. So it, it would increase density. There's nothing, absolutely nothing in our comprehensive plan that suggests that the citizens as a whole or there's would be a beneficial effect or it's a desirable thing to increase housing density. There certainly are concerns expressed about size of properties in the comprehensive plan and we've, we've made zoning amendments that address those. So again, I don't, I won't say this is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, but I don't see anything in there to support it either. Lastly, I don't think we know what all the effects will be on the town. Somebody might say, well, we don't really have very many lots for which this could apply. But certainly lots can be combined. And I believe that's an administrative process that doesn't require public input or a decision by the commissioners. So there could be certainly more lots to which this sort of thing would apply. Limiting it to fifteen hundred square feet, you can fit four bedrooms and two baths in fifteen hundred square feet. And you can add to that a deck or a screen porch which doesn't count toward fifteen hundred square feet at all. So I don't think there's a good argument here to say that, you know, property of that size is going to be any a fifteen hundred square feet is going to be any quieter or better behaved than a property that's two thousand square feet or twenty five hundred or even larger. So from my point of view, I don't support this proposal. If it's an appropriate action to vote against sending this to planning and zoning and I, I raised a question with our town attorney about what is the appropriate action with respect to a proposal like this? And before we decide to vote on this one way or the other, I'd really like to have you his thoughts about that.
Counsel? Well, what the commissioner is referring to is a requirement in the code that before the commissioner shall shall act on a proposal, they, they shall send it to the, or they shall receive a recommendation from the planning commission. And I, I would not interpret that language to mean that any proposal that is placed on an agenda has to be sent to the planning commission if the commissioners or if a majority of the commissioners were not in favor of continuing or furthering any study of that proposal, I think I think that language doesn't forbid the commissioners from electing not to send it to the planning commission. I think before the commissioners can vote in favor of a, of a change like this, they have to receive a planning commission recommendation or conclude unanimously that it is an insignificant change to the code. I don't think because this now I'm repeating myself, but I don't think because this is on the agenda, it must be sent to the planning commission. Now, the wording that the wording that Commissioner Persinger has identified, maybe, maybe there's a good faith argument that, that that's the case, but I wouldn't consider a motion not to send it to be an, an act on the proposal. I mean, I, I would think that if you put this item on the agenda, you could have moved to adopt the agendas, save this item for any number of different reasons without that being considered an act on the merits of the proposal. If I may make a comment. I, I, I look at things and I, I agree with Commissioner Persinger. You know, our job is to, you know, is there a problem? Is it consistent or inconsistent with the comprehensive plan house effect and is it beneficial for the town? Those are three things that we should consider when looking at amendments. The, the other side of it is understanding the background and that is whether or not thirty six hundred was an arbitrary number and why thirty six hundred, why wasn't it thirty two hundred, how did it come to thirty six hundred? If we were to send it to planning and zoning, I'd like to know at least from these districts, districts, you know, what have we took in looking at from an inventory perspective, but Commissioner Persinger does bring up a good point, which is it's easy enough to add two five thousands at Sussex County to have a ten thousand square foot lot and then, then what happens if it's you know, we're at thirty three hundred? I'm also reminded that the, you know, I don't want the code to get in, get in the way of logic. And if it's, if, if I own that property and I wanted to put three units in and I'm a few hundred short, you know, it's, you know, why not send it to planning? So that's my, my thought is why not send it? If it didn't allow planning zoning to go through the process, I'll open that up to the rest of council.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think I know enough about this and I don't think the public knows enough about it to really make any opinion of it, I think the forum to have it discussed and debated is in the P and Z process. I'd like to know more about it, I mean, I, I don't know enough to if I had to vote on something to approve or not approve today, I don't have enough information. But I, I, I don't see a harm in sending it to P and Z.
As long as they also look at what are the unintended consequences of these other properties.
I think it bears more, we need more detail to make a logical decision on this.
Richard Jezeski.
So a couple of things, the first thing I want to talk about is how this arrives here, so zoning codes is a zoning code and the everyone has the right, of course, to the board of adjustment if they have especially unique circumstances or hardships. And that's what the board of adjustment is absolutely there for. But we, we kind of have a situation where for one property, one property owner is basically asking us to change the zoning code for entire district or districts in this case to suit their needs and that's some people might call that spot zoning, some people might say, oh, well, you're just changing it for one person's needs, but the the issue with that is what about equal treatment? So suppose you are a Joe property owner who just owns a regular lot. And you want to do a seven bedroom house and allowing six. You say, you know, I'd really like to have seven and this is going to be that, you know, I'm popular and I have a popular business and they are a great business, everyone in the neighborhood loves them and wants to be supportive of them. Can any property owner come to the commissioners and say, you know, I'd really like it to be seven, the comprehensive plan isn't saying it should be seven, it's saying it can't be seven. It doesn't say it should be seven, but I'd like it to be seven, I'm like planning and zoning to take a look at this. And I think we're setting ourselves up for a situation where people are like, well, you did it for them, why shouldn't you do it for me? So to our, our town council's point, I think it's a slippery slope to think that just because something's quick to us that we necessarily sent that to planning and zoning just because they went and hired a attorney, the next property owner who wants inception that doesn't get a variance is going to say, well, I went planning and zoning to determine if the code, if the code should be changed for everybody. And anyone could make an argument on the residence of a single family, that's just as strong as the argument for this and so I'm concerned about the slipperiness of that slope. The, the other thing is the thirty six hundred and being arbitrary. My, my recollection is that was put in place about fifteen years ago and it's specifically put in place with the two lot example we drew. And the two lot example was if you take two lots, ten thousand square feet, your requirement's only three thousand and all of a sudden, you basically change two single family homes to a triple town, triple, triple townhouse type of situation. And the thirty six hundred was designed so you don't end up with people basically buying a neighbor's house next door or redeveloping what was two single families into now a multifamily type of situation. The other thing, Gary had mentioned the comprehensive plan. I believe this property is actually owned by Rehoboth by the sea, is that correct?
Summer Pearl, I'll see.
Is it a land lease property owned by Rehoboth by the sea?
The owner of the property is Summer Pearl, I'll see. I believe so, I can double check that for you.
I, I think at one time it was owned by Rehoboth by the sea, but they may have bought the underlying land, so that, that could have changed. What I'm not seeing here is I'm not seeing a large set of people from these areas affected saying. areas affected saying, we need this. We're seeing a single property owner kind of doing it and density is a hornet's nest. We all know it's a hornet's nest as far as public opinion and people having different opinions about which way are we going. I don't think based on a single property owner basically not being able to get what they want, that that's a good reason to open up this hornet's nest and look at potentially increasing density. And I think the issue of any property owner being similarly situated and wanting us for them to make planning and zoning happen meeting is a pretty big burden we're setting ourselves up for. So my personal opinion is that this should be put to the side, whether it's rejected or whatnot. And if this is something that planning and zoning talks about in a larger context at a future date, I don't have an issue with them talking about this in a larger context. But sending this as a standalone item based on a single property owner's request, I don't think it's the right move.
Commissioner Givens.
I'd like some education from my more experienced and learned colleagues. What is the role of planning and zoning? Can anybody ask? Educate me, please.
I think the question is so this, the question relates to the adoption of changes to the existing zoning code or the districts themselves, like, or I should say to the zoning district that is applicable to a particular property. So questions involving the zoning code and the zoning for specific parcels, whether it should be RR or RB or something else, those questions cannot be acted on without first receiving a recommendation from the Planning Commission. So it's a, we can only act by ordinance and ordinances that relate to the zoning code must be referred to the Planning Commission for a public hearing. And as the gentleman described, a second public hearing would take place here before us with the exception that if a ordinance involving a, say a conditional use, a particular conditional use was being proposed to be modified and this group were to conclude that it was not a significant change, then that change could be could be acted on by you in the absence of a recommendation.
Is a follow-up question to Commissioner Givens. Can planning and zoning act, can planning and zoning contemplate a change here without it being recommended by the council to review it?
Well, I think the rule of thumb is that council should be sending tasks to the Planning Commission. And what the language in the code says before the commissioners can take action on any proposed amendment, but it doesn't say where the proposal comes from. It doesn't say, I mean, that is so broad that that one argument could be that anyone who proposes an amendment must get their amendment sent by the commissioners to the Planning Commission for a recommendation. And I don't think that's a fair reading of it. I think you all as a commission can dictate and should dictate what it is the Planning Commission is doing, what they're studying, not the recommendation. The recommendation is independent of the commissioners' approval, but the subject matter that they're considering should be directed by this group.
If I understand that right, so we would have the ability to approve this five oh if we had a unanimous vote. But I don't think we have enough information to make a unanimous decision when subsequently, I don't think we have enough information to make it a, you know, a reject too. I mean, I think there's a missing piece there that I don't want to preclude it. Yeah, I, we'll see how everybody thinks on it, but I mean, that's my opinion. I don't know enough to say no to it. I don't know enough to say yes to it either. So if I just disregard any further information, I don't, I may learn something. Planning and zoning may come back and say, hey, 2.8 is all you're going to get. Make that third apartment smaller. I mean, if that's, if that's the recommendation, just two. Two bigger ones, right? But yeah, I don't know. That's my opinion of it. That's, we may disagree on it. We may not. I don't know.
And I do recall a single entity coming to us because their residents, when they were going to make modifications, they found out that it was in commercial as opposed to residential. And so we changed that and that was a single individual coming to us and we sent it to planning and it came back. So I don't see how this is different. Again, I think
It was a change of the zoning map though. It was in a contiguous, it was a matter of contiguous property. So it wasn't changing the code for it. It was just making the property in a different zone because of how the map looks.
And this will change it for
All properties in that zone.
Commissioner Persinger.
Yeah, I mean, this has the potential for changing and creating the potential for increased density in the entire area south of Houston Street. And I would point out, one of the mayor's comments was, what's the rationale behind 3,600 square feet? Commissioner Juzinski had, you know, some views on that or some history on that. But I would say when the comprehensive plan was done this past five years ago, I guess it was, that criteria of 3,600 square feet was already in the code. That's what they were dealing with. And again, there was no recommendation that we should consider in increasing density. If we can send this to the Planning and Zoning Commission, but and I'm not you know, trying to say that the Planning and Zoning Commission aren't smart people, but I'm not sure they're going to be able to figure out what all of the unintended consequences are for this as well. I'm not sure that we will ever know what the all of the unintended consequences are. I think we can all be relatively certain that because this particular property owner, Pfeiffer's has decided it's in his economic best interest to have more, not fewer units, that there are going to be other property owners in the south of Houston Street. They're going to come to the same determination. So it will result in increased density. I think that's, that's the one result, the one effect that we really all should be able to agree on.
Could I just add one thing about the legislative history?
Sure.
Thank you. So I went back and looked at the minutes from, like you said, about 15 years ago when 3,600 figure was adopted. I went through the minutes and I couldn't find any legislative history. That's not to say there is not a reasonable justification, but I can do some more research on that. I do know at one point for a long period of time before then, it was only 2,000 square feet. So I think, you know, this is not at all by any means giving this a green light to send to the Planning Commission. This is just simply letting them look into this further and they might come back with something totally different or not like it at all. They might just recommend denying it. So I don't want this to seem like this is an approval right here.
Plus whatever they come back with, then we have further discussion on it too. So I don't know. That's, that's how I see the process anyhow.
Well, we normally are in agreement in terms of next steps and I think we're a little bit divided. And I, I do, I do lean towards let planning and zoning weigh in. I do not, this is for my own vote. It's not going to a five oh vote. I know that. So too late.
It's a public comment.
Allow public comment also. Go ahead, Kay. Mr. Moskowitz.
Hi, David Moskowitz, full-time resident. This is going to allow more development with no understanding of the parking required or the increased population of a result for, again, one property, when you sort of already know the original intent of it. Because people are like, oh, what's the original intent was to stop to have three properties on a two property line. Now, the other thing I'd like to add is if you did study it, Rehoboth's at 5,000, not, not 3,000, 5,000. So Mr. Mandelius went to Rehoboth and in his town that he represents, it's 5,000. Dewey is more gracious at 3,600 and that's what it should stay. I mean, there's no reason to waste the planning and zoning's time. So you change it for this property and then all of Dewey changes would increase density. And the town council was supposed to study parking and that's the biggest complaint around here is parking, parking, parking. Parking never got studied, but you're going to pass this with increased population, increased density without even looking at the underlying thing. It's like you're looking at C before you look at A and B, which is parking and how to support the density the town already has.
Thank you. I think we've had a pretty good conversation all the way, you know, around this. Talking about whether it is the benefits to the town, the problems being solved, the comprehensive plan, unintended consequences, density. I'll ask if there is a motion.
I would like a motion that we table this. I think it's a hornet's nest.
Okay.
What was the motion? Sorry.
The motion is to table it. Because we don't have enough, because it's a hornet's nest, meaning we don't have enough information as definition. Do we need a motion to table?
You need a second.
A second? So I have a second to table this? Okay. I tried to get this done in 45 minutes. You guys are killing me. No. So what is, do I have another motion?
Motion to send it to P and Z.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion?
Should we give some direction to them?
Well, you got a written ordinance, so that's pretty good direction.
I do have discussion.
Go ahead, Gary.
I, as you probably know, I'm going to vote against referring it to P and Z. But in fact, you know, I'm not in the majority. I think there should be some concern about the wording of the draft ordinance that was offered. My worry is that you know, let's use the example that we have here. I think it's 10,000. Let's say 10,100 square feet, something like that. The choice here in terms of how big a unit you build, is this intended to be an all or nothing choice so that you can either build three 1,500 square foot units or two 30s or two larger units using the 3,600 criteria? What I'm concerned about is could somebody decide, okay, well, I'm going to build one larger unit. So that takes up 3,600 square feet. Then I'm going to build two smaller units because I've still got, you know, 6,000 more square feet left. I'm not sure what the intent is, but I think there should be some clarification about what the, the choices in putting this amendment in. Do you see what I'm saying?
No. So how can we revise the motion if we are going to send this to planning and zoning?
Well, I don't have a specific wording, but there would have to be some wording. I'm assuming this is a dichotomous choice here so that you know, there would have to be some language here that says you have the choice of either building 1,500 square foot units or larger than that and deal and use the 3,600 square feet criteria. So it's not a mixture of the two.
Okay. All right. I don't feel comfortable sending this to planning and zoning without more information and doing a little bit more in-depth analysis. I really don't.
Sure.
So do I have to do anything else?
Well, so what do we have? We have a motion to send it to P and Z and we have a second.
Correct.
So we can, we can call the roll.
Okay. Call the roll for vote?
No.
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Persinger?
No.
I also say no.
So I will say about this that I don't think this is the kind of motion, a motion, you know, not to send it to planning and zoning at this time that would prevent this group from taking this issue up again in the future if it chooses to or to do some more study of its own and
I appreciate Commissioner Juzinski's point of view in the sense that this is planning and zoning needs to look at overall what's happening from a, and what's going to happen from our town perspective, not an individual request. And that, you know, we just went through this a few years ago in terms of a full comprehensive review of the planning and zoning. And again, this is not saying never. It's just, I agree, we're not, shouldn't be making decisions based upon an individual.
Thank you.
Number two, discuss possible vote to refer to planning and zoning commission ordinance to men, chapter 185, dash 87 Streets and Right of Way of Municipal Code relating to minimal allowable distance between driveway entrance and intersections. Richard, well, first of all, I'll have a little conversation. Commissioner Persinger, can you give us a little bit of your thoughts on this?
Yeah, we made a change, clarifying change to the code, either last meeting or the meeting before that. And tried to clarify driveway placement for corner lots. And what we said was you could have one 20 foot wide driveway on either street that on the corner that, that corner a lot of butts. Or you could have one 10 foot driveway on each of those those streets. So I went back and I looked at some material that had been considered by the Charter and Code Review Committee some time ago. This goes back a year or so. And they actually started looking at this issue. I then looked at our existing code and what our existing code says, driveway entrances may be constructed no closer than 50 feet to any intersection. So if you're thinking about a 50 by 100 square feet corner lot, that would pretty much eliminate the possibility of having a driveway entrance on that 50, 50 feet long section of the lot. So I think what Charter and Code Review Committee were initially thinking was that they just changed the 50 to 30. The problem there is, is how do you do the measurement? How does, how does our code enforcement person, you know, nail this down so that both the property owner and the town really know exactly where this driveway entrance is permissible? So you have to have a point from which the measurement, just to say 50 feet or 40 feet or 30 feet from any intersection doesn't tell you where to start that measurement. So I was looking for some clarification there. At the same time, our building official did some research with Deldat and found that their general criteria is 40 feet basically from the intersection, but they have a specific measurement point. And I won't get into the technical details, but it's something called a point of tangent. And the problem there is I don't think our building official could determine exactly where that particular point is and begin to measure, you know, 40 feet or 30 feet from that point. So thinking through this a little bit more, I think we need a specific point that's readily identifiable and comes close to the Deldat guidance. There is some flexibility, if you will, in the Deldat regulation, which says where feasible driveway should be 40 feet from this measuring point that they have determined. So what I thought, what I'm suggesting here in the amendment that I have, and this is is included in the materials for today, I've added a second sentence to the section 185, 87, H1. So the first sentence would be changed to driveway entrances may be constructed no closer than 40 feet to any intersection. The measurement shall be taken from the lot corner closest to the two intersecting streets. So if you're, if you're doing new construction, you have to stake out your lot. You have to know where the corners of your lot are. So that gives you a specific starting point for the measurement that both the property owner and the town can agree on. And you can take your measurement from that point. So that was, that was my suggestion for this. I think that the current code as it stands really isn't enforceable because you don't know where you can change it to 40 feet, but you still don't know at what point is the intersection? What, where do you start that measurement of 40 feet from? This gives you a specific point. So that's the background.
Thank you, Gary. So this is to provide some guidance overall for our building officials to allow them as they're looking at a new plan to design, not necessarily anything that's red tracted, dirty in the ground. And I think giving them the tool and the further clarification makes sense. Is there any questions of any of the council?
So I guess what I want to understand is we've got a fair number of properties sprinkled throughout town that are on corners, lots of stuff. T intersections, all kinds. I mean, there's a lot of permutations and Commissioner Persinger's motion, you know, mentioned the where feasible in Deldat's language. And I guess what I'm kind of wondering is when someone's building new and there was nothing there, we don't really have any vacant lots. We've got lots with houses that might be torn down and rebuilt. So what are the implications for someone who just decides that they're taking an old cottage, putting a new build and their lot happens to be like right there in the corner and you've got this 40 or 50 foot rule, you know, however it's being measured? What are the implications for those people who basically have taken their, you know, 50s or 60s cottage and they wanted to build a regular house?
Commissioner Persinger? Commissioner Persinger?
Well, I would just suggest from my perspective, it's just like any other non-conforming property. If you, if you tear it down and start over, you've got to build and abide by the, the regulations and the rules that, you know, anybody else would, would have to abide by for, for new, new construction. You really have to fix the non-conformities. And so in this case, if we've got a, a property where the driveway is twenty feet from, you know, the intersection, then you want to start over and rebuild again, then, you know, you should be in conformance with the existing code.
But my, my point is there are, there are a lot of lots in town where there's no location, there would be no location that they could do it. You know, for instance, if they're on a street that's a T intersection and their lot's right across from the street in front of them, their entire fifty foot of frontage is in front of the, is in front of the intersection. So what do you do in that kind of case? I mean, Del Dot's language is where feasible, but our language doesn't say where feasible, right? So we're referring this to P and Z, so P and Z can take this issue up, I guess. But my, a question is, should we be mimicking Del Dot's language in the where feasible? Because I do think there are lots where this, this distance is obviously desirable. I get it, you know, you don't want people with driveways right at intersections. But Del Dot's language was where feasible and our language is not where feasible. So I don't know if this is the right thing or we just refer to them and let them.
I think we refer to that, well, you know, one, one of the new constructions or post-fire contractions I can think of was the one on Bayard Street where the house faces there to the north. And, I mean, they have their twenty feet in the front. That's definitely not forty feet from the corner. So that would dictate that they could not have the parking right there. You know, logically, that's where we'd want it is the front of the house, where feasible.
Yeah, but I mean, that one's a corner lot. Some people don't even have that. They only have one frontage that's right at the intersection, right?
And this is for the corner, like obviously for all corner lots.
My, my concern would be, you know, what if someone has a property that they can't put a driveway in?
That's, that's what I'm getting at, yeah.
So I don't want to preclude anybody from, I don't want to make a property just like, well, whatever's going to happen.
Right now, the code says fifty feet. What we're trying to do is provide some clarity and possibly move it to forty feet and how that's calculated.
Yeah, and whatever language there is. I think that's a direction, I, I'd like to see it go to P and Z too. I don't know what, I, I can think of a few properties just off the top of my head that there's never driveway going to go on that.
So maybe, maybe a motion might be to refer this to planning and zoning to consider either of the proposed changes. But to also consider the Del Dot's where feasible language being inserted. Maybe that's the motion.
That's a motion.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Jim Deedee's.
I took the liberty of calling the public works engineer for Del Dot here. And that's the opinion that we got and Gary and I had a little chat earlier. We do have numerous properties that would never meet this forty feet or fifty feet. They wouldn't meet it. Matt suggested, he, he said, just follow the language that we've got. And where it's feasible, if, they're not going to prevent somebody who's got a legal parcel from having a driveway. I mean, he made that very clear. My sense is adopting language with this and let it go. We've never had this kind of a problem before. And I, I, my sense is we've created a problem for ourselves with these corners. Now, I think if we make the adjustment and include the Delaware language where feasible, and I said, who determines that? He said, well, you and I, meaning the town and them would do that. So I think we've got a lot of leeway and I, in some respects personally, I feel that we created, we're creating our own problem here right now.
What's your recommendation?
Mr. Deedee's, y'all think that we're correcting the problem that already exists?
I think if we add the language where feasible, entrance shall not be located within forty feet of a radius. And then you can cite that section one point six point one, locations of entrances. Del Dot, I mean, will make, will determine it ultimately because they have the authority to do that, not us. So, you know, when I talked to Matt, he said, I, I, I think you've created your own problem by bringing this to my attention. But either way, if you add that in, he said they would be happy to, they're not going to prevent an owner from having a driveway. So I think we need to be clear that we understand that. So whether we put forty feet or thirty feet or twenty feet, you know, follow the forty feet and then I think it'll give the building official the opportunity to take out a new plan and look at and say it's impossible for them to meet the forty feet. Make a notation, let Del Dot deal with it at that point. I don't think we should be sending this in the board of adjustment because I don't think they, they can back in on this. They can't trump a Del Dot requirement.
Nice question.
Sure.
Does Del Dot have to approve the driveway location for every new construction?
According to this, yes, but we don't do that for every new construction. We've done it in the RB two district. We've done it on Route one, but we haven't done it anywhere else on, for example, we didn't do it on Barrett Avenue in the NR district when we approved two, two, two ten-foot driveways and we didn't measure the corners. We allowed that to occur on several homes.
So if Del Dot had to issue a permit in every case, then we could just refer to Del Dot. But having, having language in the code that says where feasible is, is, you know, not good language because the planning, or the building official doesn't know how to.
Where feasible means.
Interpret that, right? So anybody, well, this is what I want and what you want me to do is not feasible. And we'd say, oh, it's plenty feasible, you could do it. So you've got a standard you can't really enforce. Sometimes you have standards in this, in like the subdivision code that are subject to being waived administratively or waived when the approval is, is done. And that's what this, this seems to be something that might work better if it was in another part of the code than if it's in the zoning code. Once it's in the zoning code, you got to send, you got to either enforce it or send it to the, to the board of adjustment. And that's a process that sounds like we don't want to entertain.
I'm still not hearing a recommendation on.
From town.
So Dawn has some comments on this there if you want to recommend.
Ms. Hanks.
Good afternoon. In referencing the driveway entrances, when it first came to light, it's out of section one eighty-five dash eighty-seven, talking about driveways. Then these entrances should be no closer than fifty feet to any intersection. Now, this is, happens to be part of a code where it's talking about street design objectives. New streets constructed as part of a subdivision or land development proposal or extensions and reconstruction of existing streets. So then this particular fifty-foot parameter was part, my perspective, when it comes to or extensions or reconstruction of existing streets. We don't appear to have any of those particular parameters, at least at this point in time, no streets. I don't know where it would go, where, where we would have availability. And reconstruction of existing streets, it doesn't seem to be feasible. However, within the Dewey code, I do not see a definition for the word intersection. What does that mean? I don't see a, a definition for the term subdivision. And this is in the definition section. So if we're going to be looking into Del Dot, are we going to be accepting all of their definitions and parameters? Or do we need to somehow clarify what would be more appropriate to our location, especially since we have many, many non-conforming lots to parameters from Del Dot? Del Dot has not also from, since I've been here, come in and spoken with the town and said, this lot, that lot and so forth. They don't need our parameters for driveways, entrances and so forth. Commercial structures and so forth are always sent to Del Dot for their, their review. But when it comes to residential units, I know of none either have been gone to Del Dot or has Del Dot come to us? I think we need to have some work with our code as well on definitions to help me as well as Jim to be able to look into this code and enforce it properly.
Ms. Hanks, the, the intention of this agenda item was to provide you with the tools to properly assess and, and do your job in terms of understanding from the parking or from driveway standpoint. And I understand the, the lack of, or the need for further definitions or at least to refer to Del Dot. The, the intent here was to send this to planning and zoning for them to review and to provide us some clarification of, of next steps or how we should, or how Ms. Hanks could look at new plans as they're coming into town. So that being said, Ms. Hanks, as Commissioner Persinger had initially stated, the addition to the ordinance, is there anything in addition that would, I'm, I'm assuming it's going to be to further define some of the elements in the ordinance? Is there anything else that we could add to that to make your job easier?
At this particular moment, I really don't know what to be able to express. This is, what I've just stated was the little bit of, of research that I've done in the limited time to be able to add some information. So at this particular moment, I don't know what else to, to state.
Can I make one comment, Mr.?
Yes, sir.
That section of what we're referring to really deals with highway. And it talks about commercial property and entrances. It alludes to that in the Del Dot. It doesn't really talk about residential areas. I'm just pointing that out that for clarification.
Okay. To try to close this, to close this up. We have a motion. And a second. And shall we also amend that motion to, to potentially add further definitions in terms of what is an intersection? And what was the other one, Dawn?
She said subdivision.
Subdivision.
The term subdivision.
I mean, Fred had some concerns about using the term that I had suggested where feasible and doing that. So an amendment to the motion is that they consider, whatever they consider, they consider the town council and building officials input into the best way to accomplish it and allow people who can't do it.
And to be able to come to an answer.
Yeah.
Any other, any other conversation?
David amending?
I'm sorry, Gary, I didn't see you because you, Dawn's.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure where that leaves us. I mean, Fred was uncomfortable with adding something in there in terms of feasibility. But there was also the notion that there may be some possibility of waiving this requirement in certain situations. So could, could you add something and would it be appropriate to put it in the zoning code? The ability of the town building official to, to, to waive this requirement in a situation where a property owner would be denied access to the property by following this, this standard.
Yeah. I think that's a good amendment.
Okay.
I took the David.
Okay. So with that amendment. And Kate, you got all that right?
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay. So second.
Council to, to nod.
Oh, I was, I was nodding. Is that what you're asking for a nod? I, I mean, I think that we don't have to get this exactly right in terms of sending it to the planning. And they could very well come up with something that you all like better than what you've had an opportunity to muster.
Do their job.
All right. So it's the motion decided with all of that, Jim, those changes?
Call the.
Call the.
Aye.
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 Gary?
Aye.
All right.
All right.
Number four, discuss possible vote in ordinance to men chapter one, or chapter eighty-five, one thirty-two, one A curfew for minors in municipal code to revise the effective time for nightly curfew for minors. As a matter of clarity, the town, I don't know when it was put in, but our, we have always had a curfew here in town for as long, you know, as long as we can lease it back.
At least as far as two thousand and ten.
It was two thousand and ten. So this is not a new element. In the last meeting, we did increase the fine associated for violation of the curfew. This is purely a motion to make it consistent where right now it is eleven o'clock on Sunday through Thursday and twelve o'clock on Friday and Saturday. So this is to make it eleven o'clock all seven days a week. Conversation.
I think it's simpler. Since we've had it in place for so long, the only argument that I've heard, I think we've received some emails that it's illegal to do curfews and things like that. I know over in Washington DC, they've implemented that to fight crime and that's, you know, our intentions of doing. We want to give better discretion to our, our police chief and officers that they can do their job and maybe can weigh in on, on some of the legalities of this from council and from chief.
Since we've had it in place for so long, the only argument that I've heard, I think we've received some.
Somebody needs to mute. Yeah, here we go. So I had gotten an indication that the ACLU had some concerns about, about this. Can I comment on that?
You can if you. I received an email this morning indirectly from the ACLU, which they said that, they asked, please do not quote the ACLU regarding amendment or underlying ordinance to quote provided below was based on a characterization of the ordinance, not the actual ordinance. The ACLU dash DE Delaware has not made any comment related to the Dewey amendment or ordinance.
So I had contacted the ACLU yesterday and sent them a copy of the, the entire section as well as the ordinance. The ordinance that's proposed is proposing just to make a simple change to one aspect of, of the code. The balance of the code contains a number of different protections that would enable a juvenile to go to and from some appropriate activity, whether it's a job, to be on an errand and to be on the street in the case of an emergency or to be exercising their First Amendment protected rights. So that language, I don't think the ACLU had an opportunity to, to witness. So I sent that material to them and I, and I told the individual I spoke with, and I'm not going to characterize what he said. It wouldn't be fair, he's not here. But if the ACLU were to have specific concerns about our ordinance as a whole, I would, you know, we would invite those considerations and they don't have to be before today's meeting, which, which I was advised we weren't going to get any comments before today's meeting. But if it's two months from now and they've had a chance to give this in consideration, they want us to, to consider a proposal of, of theirs to make it more palatable to the ACLU. We would consider that.
Absolutely.
So that's, that's where we are. I've done some, some legal research. Curfews are, have certainly been upheld in the state of Delaware. Been a number of cases involved in even the Supreme Court in which evidence that was obtained following a stop for a curfew violation was debated as to whether or not it should be suppressed. But the actual stop based on someone's apparently being a juvenile and, and in violation of the curfew ordinance was not challenged. So it's, I think it's pretty well accepted. A number of cities, I think the police chief can speak to this better than I can, but I know the city of Wilmington has had had a curfew ordinance. And in fact, there are curfew ordinances that apply during the day when children are supposed to be in school. So this is really not a novel concept and it is a principle or an ordinance that's been in effect here at least since two thousand and ten, if not longer.
Okay. Any questions from the commission?
Can Chief weigh in?
Sure, Chief can weigh in.
I think she's been wrongly accused of trying to do something here that's targeting certain people because they look young.
First of all, I'd like to say that doing some research, seventy percent of towns and cities across the country in the United States have a curfew in effect. US Department of Justice, curfews can be effective and constitutional. N C J number one six seven three three eight, an excerpt from that, it says. can be effective and constitutional. N CJ number 167338, an excerpt from that, it says, "In low-crime communities, they provide the police with a means to disperse late-night crowds of juveniles," which is what we experienced during the Fourth of July and during, in June, when all the kids descended for their senior week, "to stop and question youth during curfew hours, and if necessary, to keep them off the streets. For parents, curfews provide support and legitimacy for restrictions on the late-night activities of their children." The curfew was found to be reasonable because it used the least restrictive means of accomplishing its goals by exempting juveniles who were accompanied by a parent or guardian, engaging in core First Amendment activity, traveling to or from employment, engaged in interstate commerce, or responding to an emergency. Our current curfew that we have had into effect for quite some time has defenses explanations where it states, "No arrests of any minor shall be made for a violation of this section unless the arresting officer first affords the person the opportunity to explain his or her conduct, and no person shall be convicted of a violation of this section if it is determined at trial that the explanation so given was true and disclosed a lawful purpose." And as the mayor said, this curfew has been in effect for quite some time. The main goal tonight is to change the Friday and Saturday nighttime to end at 11:00 instead of 12:00, which is, we're mirroring Bethany Beach. Bethany Beach, seven days a week, their curfew is 11:00 PM. There are other beach towns in other states surrounding us where they have changed their curfew. They close the beach at 9:00. They don't allow backpacks. They actually stop juveniles and search their backpacks because juveniles are carrying alcohol in the backpacks. So they're doing all kinds of things like that. Our goal here in Dewey, as we had said several meetings ago where we increased the fine, was when we had the huge influx of juveniles, especially the Fourth of July weekend, and they were loitering on the Wings That Go parking lot and that whole shopping area. And as I said before, they're not all out there eating pizza and getting ice cream. There's a group of 10, maybe two of them are purchasing food. So when they're all standing around these establishments, it doesn't allow for other people to comfortably go to these establishments. We had many foot chases with these people. I sent out a several-page document, emails to all the citizens, explaining what we were trying to do to combat these problems. We had numerous complaints from all the homeowners on the beach with all the juvenile problems, with them disrupting their property, drinking alcohol on the beaches, basically trespassing on their property and doing all kinds of things they shouldn't be doing. So really, by changing this curfew to 11:00, it allows us to basically deal with any juvenile problems we have. We address them. We warn them. We'll have signs posted. We'll educate, especially before next season. We'll have it posted in the papers. We'll post it on our Facebook page, our town website, that our curfew is at 11:00. So when we're out with groups of juveniles, of course, we have already the signs, the no loitering signs posted. Then we'll also have the curfew, and we can say, hey, guys, you know, you got to get your pizza and go, get your ice cream. It's time to go. We have no loitering signs, and we also have a curfew. If you're under the age of 17, you can't be out after 11:00 at night. Simply, that's it. We are not targeting people. There's protections in our code, like you had said earlier, that if someone's coming to and from work, if they're with their parents, if they're walking home, if they're going from a school event or anything like that, that's not what we're looking to. We have no problems with those people. It's the loitering and the problems created by large masses of juveniles. That's why we're addressing this. And once again, if we can deal with this problem and they go home by 11:00 at night, then we can deal with our other issues that happen at the bar rush at 1:00, where a lot of people are intoxicated, and then we have a lot of fights and stuff like that. So what we don't want is that overlap of dealing with wards of juveniles, and then we have the bar rush. And also, they've proven in many states and cities across the country that when juveniles are out at later times at night, they get involved in crime or they become victims of crime because they're out when they should be home. So this is why we're asking for this change. It's one minor change. This has been effective for many, many years.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Any questions, Chief?
May I comment, or do we have two questions first?
You can comment.
Thank you. So to no one's surprise in this room, I got lots and lots of contact from folks, residents in town about this issue. I have no problem with the curfew being changed. That is not the issue. I want to highlight, like if we can make it in yellow and stars all around it, what you've said, that walking while young is not a violation of any law. If you're going somewhere with your pizza, if you've come in to pick up food, if you run to the pharmacy to get, that is fine. So we're not going to be profiling. We're not doing ageism. We're not making it illegal to walk while young.
No.
I just wanted that highlighted, that this is for safety of the juveniles and for people in town. I happen to have a, very specific, my son's girlfriend is 24 years old and looks 16. If we were stopping people that look young, she would be stopped every time. But as long as she's doing something that's legal, nobody's going to be bothering anybody.
That's correct.
Thank you, Chief.
Any other comments before I ask for a motion?
Hold on a minute.
Sure.
You have two in the room, David Moskowitz and Mary Dunmire.
Let's start with Mary.
Yeah, hi. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, Mayor.
Hi. So I was, it sounds like, I think you've already all made your decision, more or less. So I'm not going to talk about the curfew itself. So, but I was going to say that 11:00 is early for a 17-year-old, and I just thought I would share that with you. And 11:00 realistically becomes 10:30, and I know this from personal experience, that I had to, you know, tell my daughters to leave their friend's house on Baird and start walking home at 10:30 so that they could be home by 11:00 on a weeknight. And, you know, as teenagers do, our notorious, teenagers are notorious for saying, but mom, I'm the only one. But in this case, it was true. They were the only ones. And the reason for that, and this is the point I want to make, the reason for that is that nobody knows. No other parents are aware that there is a curfew in Dewey Beach because the places that they come from, curfews are for areas where there is violent teenage crime. It's not, they're just not used to it. So we have to make people aware that there's a curfew, to be fair. And, you know, I would hate to see that done by signs everywhere because I just think that that would look really family-unfriendly. So this is, I mean, let me say, this is kind of a positive problem that we have. I think that Dewey has become a lot more family-friendly while still maintaining a great nightlife, and I think that's why we're seeing more teenagers. So that's a good thing. I don't think we want to discourage them or make them feel unwelcome. And I hope that there's a way that you can make people aware of the curfew without posting signs everywhere. But I also wanted to say that I would like to see that for teenagers, for young people who are just walking from place to place and who aren't gathering in a large group and who aren't obviously drunk or aren't committing any kind of crime or being disorderly, that that, stopping them to ask them if they're underage, should really be a low enforcement priority. That's just what I would like to see. I don't think that a teenager walking from point A to point B, not causing any trouble, should be stopped, really. So that's all I wanted to say. Let me also say, though, I did look up and see who's got curfews and who doesn't have curfews. So you mentioned Bethany's got a pretty restrictive curfew. Ocean City, Maryland, has a crazy restrictive curfew. But, you know, we're not Ocean City by any means, and I don't think we want to be Bethany. So Lewis has none, Rehoboth has none, South Bethany has none, Ocean View has none, Millville has none, Henlopen Acres has none, Slaughter Beach has none. Obviously, unincorporated areas of Sussex County has none. Millsboro has a curfew for those who are under 16. Milford has a curfew that is 12:00 PM and 1:00 AM in the summertime, and it's for people who are under 17. Bridgeville, again, under 17. Fenwick has a 1:00 AM curfew, and Milton has a 10:00 AM, under 18, curfew, pretty restrictive curfew in Milton. So Dewey Beach will be among the towns that have one of the most restrictive curfews, if, you know, continue. I just wanted to make that point. And I'm like, as probably most of the public, I'm not familiar with the problems or the arrests or the crimes that are being committed by teenagers. So I can't say whether it's important for public safety or not to lower the curfew. But I wanted to give you a perspective. I'm not that far away from the teenage years, and I suspect that most of you are much further away from the teenagers. So I just wanted to share my perspective. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dunmire. Mr. Moskowitz?
Yeah, David Moskowitz, full-time resident, and I have a five-year-old. That, five years have gone by, and before I know it, she'll be 15, 16. And the underlying ordinance is troublesome. But the issue is, like, you talk about Washington DC. Washington DC, to meet the stricter constitutional requirements, provides data. I followed the FOIA asking the town for police data. The town, under the previous police chief, used to provide such data, and they were actually given in monthly reports. Basic items such as the number of curfew violations and disorderly conduct broken up by under 18 and 18-plus, the town couldn't provide. So the question is, the town claims there's a problem, but they won't provide any data, won't say if the perpetrators are under 18, over 18. And then the way that they describe the problem, they always say underage drinking, but you can actually ticket for that or disorderly conduct. And then Washington DC doesn't have a pest problem, and this is to Commissioner Givens about being young and your son's girlfriend. Not too long ago, two young men, both over 18, were quietly walking home, were stopped for curfew in Dewey Beach. One was a Dewey lifeguard with a stellar racket and honored students. Both were over 18, so there should have been no issues. But the Dewey officer who used the curfew as a reason for the stop then asked if they were drinking. Both said no, but the officer didn't believe them and arrested them. They asked for a brutalizer, and the town refused to give them. So, you know, college scholarships can be lost, livelihood. The town has a history of when something happens, putting it on social media and then getting sued after, and then the town pays out lawsuits because that was another incident. And then you have, the police officers, mostly white, mostly male. How do you know the stops are not disproportionately female and disproportionately minorities if the town's not tracking data, which sounds fishy because my FOIA should have been answered. It's also the two hours that will lead to entrapment. So like, as Ms. Dunmire said, you're changing it from midnight to 11:00, which is early for that age. But at the same time, the town lets mini-golf close at 11:00. The town lets the ice cream place they recently approved close at midnight. So you have people who are going to come on vacation, go to mini-golf, they'll play the last hole, walk back to their place, and they're breaking a curfew. And you're basically saying, hey, come on vacation, enjoy mini-golf, and then face the police into action. Now, also what the town didn't say, and the police chief didn't disclose, is per their Facebook posts like a day or two ago, the town actually has an agreement with the vendors in question that keep them being mentioned, which is actually private property, that the town has a police presence in that area. So the private property is whatever. The problem is, you're changing a curfew from 12:00 to 11:00. As people walk the street, a public street, they're going to be entrapped. And that's the problem. Like, it makes no sense to change it to that time. This is going to affect everyone. You don't have to be under 18. You can look under 18, and the police can then stop you. And I mean, this is America, and it sounds like it's like Russia, where someone can ask you for your papers. It just sounds ridiculous. And I live here full-time, so which means my daughter, when she's 16, it's January, and the town is dead. She could be walking home from work, and the town police officer could stop her at all time. It just makes no sense. And there's a lot of other families in this area. This area has changed. So I mean, I would hope, since there's no data as constitutionally given, the town has provided no data, there's no reason to pass this. What are you accomplishing by changing the two hours other than entrapping people?
About your three minutes. Thank you.
Commissioners?
May I speak again, or shall I let others speak first?
Let's have others speak first. Commissioner Zenzky?
The public safety arm of our town has made a pretty strong case for many tools to do these things. We've gotten a lot of complaints from citizens. No one wants to harass people. And enforcing things appropriately is why we hired Chief Speaks in the first place, is to make sure that her people use proper discretion, and that we don't have people necessarily not giving good judgment or part of our law enforcement team for what needs to be done. But we have to support our police chief to prevent things like happened over the July Fourth weekend from happening. We have to give her tools, her team, to be able to do that. It's part of our force.
Commissioner Givens?
Commissioner Bauer might need to speak first.
I'll just weigh in briefly. I mean, it's 17 and under, correct?
Yes.
That's our ordinance. So that means a 16-year-old, a 15-year-old, 14, 13-year-old. And we've had issues with 13-year-olds running the streets and running, you know, being detained by officers and still running off. You know, I mean, these sort of things we're trying to please. There's good teenagers and there's some bad teenagers, too. I mean, we don't really care about the good teenagers. I don't think our pretty sure chief isn't here and instructing the officers to arrest good people. No, that's not the idea. We want to get rid of the bad people. And I think that's the overriding message in my mind of, you know, let's make it level. I still remember mom and dad telling me, you've got to be home before the streetlights come on. So, yeah, 11:00.
Streetlights in your?
Yeah, we had electricity back then.
Commissioner Persinger, you want to weigh in before I ask for a motion?
Yeah, I've been through the teenage years once, other than my own teenage years. But now I'm hitting them again with teenage grandchildren. So, you know, it's a problem that we all face at some time. The chief has asked for this change in the curfew. She believes it's necessary. She believes it's going to be effective. I think in granting that, I think it's incumbent on the town to provide education, to let, make sure that families know what the curfew is. They have to have an opportunity to adjust their plans. You know, if their teenagers need to be back in the house, if they're rental property by 11:00 PM, or they're somewhere else, they're on the boardwalk, parents need to know about the curfew so that they can provide transportation if that's what's necessary. So I don't know what the town's plans are, but certainly there's a newsletter. You know, there could be some, I think there's probably already a list of Dewey Beach regulations that probably some of the rental offices provide to people who come and rent properties through them. So, you know, this should be an item that would be added to there as well. So I mean, let's make this change. This is my view. Let's make the change. But let's also make sure there's an education component to this as well, so that, you know, we don't have people that's required.
Agreed.
May I?
Can I have a motion?
May I please speak?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We can do that after a motion tonight.
Let me do it. So I see the change in the curfew as being preventative and protective, and in no way does it make Dewey Beach seem like a town that is having troubles. Virginia Beach, for example, which is where I grew up, had a curfew of 18 when I was 18. And yes, as the lady pointed out, it was many, many years ago. But it was to keep people safe and prevent problems. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah. If I can add one more thing. We did get quite a few complaints from Dagworth Beach Street this summer. And we could probably read all those emails into the record if people wanted information on the types of things that were going on. So not all teenagers are good teenagers. And, you know, we had a share of bad ones, and we want to, I don't think that any intention, the chief has any intention, or our public safety has any intentions to get good people off the street. It's the bad ones.
With that, sure, Harry. I'm Mr. Gallagher.
I'm Harry Gallagher, 121 Clayton Street. Personally, I stay up pretty late, so I was watching the activities during June and July as far as the movement. You know, a lot of the kids, like, people are brought up, they move in 20s and 25s. So they'll go from like one house now, and then like an hour or two later, they'll go to another house, all 20 or 25 of them, you know, going together, all backpacks on and everything. Part of the concern, too, I guess, is some of the rental units that are being signed out or signed for by the parents who just kind of let them, you know, go into this unit. And, you know, that's part of the problem. I mean, I think that's the basis for that. I know a lot of them love to rent the units off of Bayard that's not in Dewey, near the water tower, those three high-rises, and the other house there. And the other issue, too, is that I've noticed a lot of vehicle And the other issue, too, is that I've noticed a lot of vehicles coming to these homes, and kids that are not staying here are getting into their cars, you know, loud, of course, and, you know, alcohol, as you know, your hearing starts going, so people's voices start getting louder and louder and screaming. And then they get into cars and go elsewhere. So, you know, I don't know, I can't say if they're drinking or not, I'm presuming at that age they are, and they're getting in vehicles and getting on the highway and going elsewhere for that. So I think this is probably needed, and like any precaution, you know, this has got to be rolled out kind of incrementally a little bit and not, you know, stop a young, not stop a young person because of their age. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Does that one more thing?
Sure.
Can we add something, like when someone rents a house, they, you know, they should probably know, that's probably a good communication vehicle about the curfew, right? So anybody that's renting homes should know that.
Yeah, but it's not something we can obviously put in a motion since it's purely based on the time.
I mean, I just think that's something, you know.
Okay.
I'm ready to add this motion to a group of us.
Go ahead.
I did.
Second. Two.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. You're funny. All right.
How was your name?
Yeah, what's your name? All right. Number five, discuss possibly vote to appoint Dave Lyons as Chairperson of the Charter and Code Review Committee.
Like a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Six, review and discuss the progress and timeline for the Town Hall.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So we are moving into Phase Two, which is the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing part of the Town Hall. We have a meeting scheduled with GMV and the engineers on the 24th at 10:00, myself, GMV Ds, and the folks doing the construction. Also, we've looked into DPL with the huge power lines that run down Route One. There's going to be one right in front of the new Town Hall at the request of some individuals. We've looked to see what DPL can do about burying that into the ground. They are writing up a contract, it'll come back to us, I will submit it to the commissioners for review. It's going to be approximately $150,000 to bury that high-power line. These are the high-power lines that run from Five Points all the way down to Ocean City's inlet. So you look at the cost, and it won't be a lot. That's what they're estimating it will be. They're drawing up a contract. I will have that contract, I'll submit it to the commissioners, you'll be able to look at and review it, and let me know what you want to do.
If I just could ask one question, Bill, if you can, ask them to commit or submit two estimates, one being to bury, and I assume there's a separate estimate if they were just to simply move the pole 20 feet?
I'll ask them about that, I think, because the amount of tension on the wires, that may not be possible, but I will ask them.
If they can. All right, and then, thank you for the update. Any questions for Town Manager? Okay, thank you, Bill. Number seven, review the financials, July financials. I'll throw out to council for any questions that you may have of Sheena and/or the Town Hall. Commissioner Persinger?
This is a comment. If you, if you take the, I don't know if you have to get back to, so just flip to the last page, page 14 of this rather large set of data here, and I think we need to do some work here to make this more friendly format. This is not the most friendly format in the world, but if you look at the bottom of the last three columns on page 14, our annual budget, we have what I would say is a pretty thin margin, expected surplus of about $29,000. And if you look at the expected surplus, that is the surplus that was expected as of the end of July, it was expected to be quartered, almost quartered $84,000. If you look at our surplus to date, our actual surplus to date, it's $268,000. We're $215,000 short of where we expected to be. And as we all know, our expenditures are seasonal, our revenues are very seasonal. So I think we should all be concerned that to date, if this is an accurate assessment of where we think we should be, I think we should all be concerned that we're $215,000 short of where we think we should be. I think that makes it all the more important for us to take a much harder look at some of our expenditures. We made, the decision has been made to hire 300 police officers. I'm not going to try and revisit that decision in any respect. Now, I abstained from it because I wasn't fully supportive of the understanding that we had at that time of the financial effects, but I think it's time to really understand what that's going to cost us and then how to pay for it. I've posed this question more than once, I don't have an answer yet, but I think it's an important question we need to pursue. Wherever we have other expenditures, big expenditure items, I think we need to do a good, hard assessment of where we think we're going to be at the end of the year. I don't want us to get too far down here and have the prospect of a significant deficit. We talked earlier about the budget controls in the audit report. You know, this is a situation where, you know, if you're going to make a change in the budget, you might have to make a change that goes in the other direction. It's not being able to spend more money, but perhaps having to spend less. I don't know what those decisions would be, I don't even know what the questions are right now, but I think we need to do a hard assessment of this kind of information.
Thank you, Commissioner Persinger. Maybe one of the things we can ask the budget finance to take a deeper look at. And I agree with you, you will, I'll ask the town to work for this at the next meeting. We have the information, and just, I do like having the summary financial.
Right.
So we can add that back, because I didn't see that where it's a quick overview. Okay?
Yes.
Any other questions for the town on the budget?
Yeah, pretty much everything you want to know about finances on all 14 pages.
There's more sheets, too. So, final element, comments. Town Manager?
Yeah, thanks. We had a great skimboarding competition that took place last week. I'd like to just say to Jason Wilson, he ran a very good competition, we had a lot of turnout, it was very positive, family experience for the town, and I look forward to working with him next year also. I'd like to also remind everybody, on the 26th, next Saturday at 4:00 PM, we're having Meet the Candidates right here in this room. We hope we had a lot of people turn out to ask questions of our candidates. I'd like to thank the whole team, they've been doing a great job this summer. We're only four months into our budget as of the end of July. Everything is going well, I believe, and our team is doing well. And a special thanks to Sheena for the great job she did on our audit.
Thanks, sir. Police Chief?
All right, so I'm going to review the stats for the month of July. Total agency calls for service, that's 827, that includes full-time and seasonals. What that also means is anytime they called out the parking ticket, speeding ticket, anybody they stopped or any enforcement action that they took, so that's where the 827 comes from. The sworn officers, there were 45 traffic tickets, 156 parking, 10 accidents, 22 criminal investigations, two DUI arrests, two ordinance arrests, 19 criminal adult arrests, 19 warrant arrests, and 15 business checks. For the seasonal count, there were 484 parking tickets. This was from May 26 through August 14, the whole time they've started with us. So that's 484 parking tickets, 214 civil citations, 81 criminal citations, and 87 arrests. They're doing a really good job, everybody's working really hard, and I think they've been very good about getting out on their bikes, getting on the gator, patrolling the beaches and all kinds of things like that. So our UTV vehicle that we ordered, they initially told me it was supposed to come in at the end of October, it's already in. So we're waiting on the lights and siren to be put on it, and then we're going to mark it, and I'm hoping that we can be out and about in town with it by the end of September. The next thing is that K9 Maximus was a little too overly enthusiastic in some areas. So we have decided to go with another dog, he's a Malaher, he's black, his name is K9 Smoke. So Corbin Curtain will be going down to North Carolina October 2nd through the end of the month. Everything goes well in their four-week training program, our K9 will be back in town in November. So I will provide more information on K9 Smoke after we make sure that everything works out with him before we announce him and before we bring him into council so the Americans swear K9 Smoke in. That is our plan. Some of our seasonals have already departed, a few of them have already left for college. Some of them that are local are going to be actually coming in and helping out Friday and Saturday nights through the end of October. So I still, even though I only have 11, I still have a decent amount of them to get to the end of October, so I'm very happy with that. And I think that's pretty much it, everything's going very well. And thank you again for all of your support with all the changes we've been making, it's really made a difference.
Good. Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. Thanks for keeping us safe.
Commissioner Bauer?
Well, first of all, Sheena, thank you for helping with the audit and the Audit Committee and Dan Kenny and his team. You know, it's good to know that we successfully had a good year, and I think that's important for the public to know. You know, going into next year, I mean, you know, we're four months in, it looks like some of the numbers, like transfer tax is better than we thought, building permits were good, what was down?
So parking for the month of June was down, but when you talk to Carol Everhart and some other folks, June was actually a cooler month this year than it's been in the past. We had two weekends where we had rain, and then you also, people have forgotten, we had that, the smoke from Canada that came down, and that also, we believe, discouraged some folks. But we are down for parking for the month of June.
So hopefully, you know, as July and August numbers come in, you know, and historically with transfer tax, that's mostly a September, October, November, December thing, which are in March, you know, leading up to the end of our fiscal year. So I think we're hitting the season of, you know, of the best incomes that we have. And I think some of the hotel tax hasn't totally come in yet, right? That's paid in a certain period of time?
It has been coming in, and it's right where we thought it would be, with the exception of about 7%.
Yeah, so it doesn't look like revenue, the revenue number's going to be, you know, besides the parking being the only thing off in June, and hopefully, it seemed pretty busy around here, so a lot of cars parked, so I think we're going to be okay. So I want to thank everybody for all the hard work that they did, and, you know, I know our enforcement's out there doing a good job. You know, they're writing tickets, but they're also informing people, so sometimes it's not a bad idea to give somebody, you know, let somebody not have a ticket, so.
It's the education first, enforcement second.
And I think that's a good policy to follow, even if it costs us a little bit of money.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Givings?
I had a friend come to town this past week who had not been in Dewey for more than 30 years. She could not stop gushing last night about how lovely the town is, how fabulous the restaurant options are, how friendly all the officers are, how wide our beach was. She just went on and on, so I want to thank everybody for making me look good having her in town.
Commissioner Zuzinski?
I don't have any comments.
Commissioner Persinger?
Yeah, based on the Town Manager's comments and Commissioner Bauer's comments, I really have to reiterate again, I mean, I think we have reason to be concerned that we may not be doing so well. And I repeat it, we are $215,000 short of where we expected to be in terms of budget surplus. And these numbers are not just through June, they're through July. We have a good rainy day fund of over $2 million. Deficit, budget deficits are not rainy days.
Got it. Thank you, sir. I have no comment. With that, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn.
Motion?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.